This time I'd like to call to order the March 9, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Item two on our agenda, acceptance of the March 9, 2011 proposed agenda.
That's so moved.
Moved by Mr. Robert Nance.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of, just a couple of comments on the minutes, if I may.
Uh, Mr. Dumas, that's, we're accepting the agenda, the sit in the minutes.
Oh, the agenda, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I have a motion to accept the proposed agenda by Robert Nance.
Second.
Seconded by Milton Cluot. Is there any discussion? This time we'll go ahead and take a vote. Mr. Dalton.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Would this be my roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Estenhor.
Yes.
Item three, we've already done a roll call. Item four, acceptance of the minutes of the February 9, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Dumas, you had some questions.
Yes, sir. I, you know, in reviewing the minutes, I noticed that there, that there's some detailed comments about one of the items that occurred on the, on the January hearing and, and I'm not so sure that this information is entirely accurate, at least I don't agree with it. I think that some of the comments in here, that we did not act accordingly. I, I think that the record shows that, that the matter was presented, debated extensively, a motion was made, it was clearly done and it was repeated. Everybody was given an opportunity to vote and then, and then voted and I, and I see where that led to a process where we're now doing all the roll calls, but I don't, I just don't, don't agree that this is an accurate representation of what occurred in January.
Okay, so these are the January minutes that you're referring to?
No, I am referring to the minutes that are for February meeting. I was not here.
Oh, okay.
But what I'm reading in here, I don't think it's an accurate representation of what occurred in January. And, and I don't know that, I, you know, I'm proposing that you change it. I'm, I'm just wanting to, into the record that I don't agree with, with this information. I don't believe this is accurate. That's all I'm saying, just I'm making a statement.
Okay, all right. All right, is there any other comments pertaining to the minutes?
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say since I guess it's referring to my comments, if I understand, Mr. Dumas, you take exception with the, the lack of a debate and the record would show that there was debate. I've looked at the film two or three times and, and what had happened there is exactly as I stated, the chairman called for the question and there was no debate. We did, of course, have, quote, "discussion and debate" during the public comment period as well as when the developer, actually the attorney, Mr. Cone, took the microphone and we had discussion back and forth and rebuttal, but if you look back at that tape, sir, I think you'll see clearly that, just for the record tonight, that there was no debate actually after the motion was made. We voted on it immediately.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying that during the courses of process of how we've done business over the years, you know, we've had extensive debate, the chairman calls for the wish of the commission, a motion's usually made. On some rare occasions, there's further debate and what have you, but to imply in the record that there was no debate, whether it occurred at any given time, I, I believe that's inaccurate. There was ample debate, there was an awful lot of discussion of whether or what was and shouldn't be considered in a motion, in approving a subdivision. And, I mean, and I think all of that debate occurred. Whether it occurred at a time that you felt, you know, it's appropriate under rubber rules or not, I, I think it occurred and, and I'm just saying that, you know, this misrepresents those facts because there was an awful lot of debate that occurred, an awful lot of exchange with the attorney, a lot of exchange between us, the commissioners and staff, and I think that, that the record, the film clearly shows that.
So, Mr. Dumas, are you just, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sadley.
I apologize for not being recognized. If you're just making a comment, that's acceptable to me unless you're asking for a change in the minutes.
No.
Because we'll have to agree to disagree and I don't want to, you know, just drag this out, but you made-
I'm just making a comment, that's it.
But you made a comment that, that there was debate and I'm not in my comments here saying that there wasn't debate, I just said the debate didn't occur after the motion, which was an appropriate time for it, sir, that's all I'm saying. Thank you very much. All right. All right, is there any other comments pertaining to the February 9, 2011 minutes? Okay. Have a motion by Bob Nance to approve.
I second.
Seconded by Dan Sadley. Any discussion? At this time, we'll vote.
I was not here, so I'm going to abstain on the minutes.
I have an abstention by Howard Dalton.
Same thing, I was not here.
Abstention by Steve Barrow. Mr. Dumas.
I will abstain just with my comments.
Abstention by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Now, we're voting, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cluot.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Estenhor. We have an abstention by J.B. Estenhor.
I was in present.
Ms. Zerazua-Gradyen.
Yes.
So, that's one, two, three, four. Uh, four yays and four abstentions. So, it passes.
Camera done.
Four, four, I thought only three abstained.
Four abstains.
J.B. abstained. Item five, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission, please come up, sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to, to speak. Mr. Terry, you wish to address the commission at this time? You're the only one that signed up, so.
All right. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I come before you tonight to thank you and to encourage you after attending the January and February subcommittee meetings for the subdivision in the planning and zoning. What I witnessed was the engagement of the commission members and you welcomed the public participation in the meetings. You utilized the public participation and you heard stuff that was echoed in the meetings that were held for the master plan. And you've utilized the input from the public in making changes and proposals and for this, I'd like to thank you and encourage you to continue and it kind of renewed our faith in the public being involved in the process. So, for that, I thank y'all very much. I'd also like to point out that on a part of the administration, there could possibly be a little room for improvement in that area with the participation in a proactive manner in giving input into the meetings. If we spent as much time doing that as we did in preparing slides and promoting the PUDs and the SCUDs, I think this parish should move forward a whole lot better and faster in continuing to promote that. The leadership of this parish has a wonderful opportunity to spark public participation and to also encourage y'all. I was encouraged by his speech at the council meeting recommending that some of the issues with planning and zoning be brought back to this committee. And for that, I thank him for what he's doing and we, the people of this parish, are watching and we're waiting to see how this interacts and how he works with these committees. And hopefully, he'll be judged by the fruits of his labor in October by the voters and we encourage him to continue to participate, get involved and help y'all, help y'all out so we can move this parish forward. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. All right, item six, public hearings to consider the following family partitions. Six A, the Carrie and Tina Schneider property and Rhett and Eileen Decoto property, lots 2B-1-A-1, 2B-1-A-2, 2B-1-B-1 and 2B-1-B-2. Mr. Quentmal.
Enough dashes in there, I think.
Plenty of dashes.
Yeah, they get pretty long.
Can we try some dots next time?
Yeah, there we go. I'm Clint Quentmal, representing W.J. Quentmal Surveyors, asking for Planning Commission approval on the following family partition. All comments have been addressed.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Quentmal from commissioners at this time? Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Chairman. If all requirements have been redressed, one of which was a T-turnaround, that's not represented on the plat I have before me.
Should have the, there should be a variance for the LDC, section 17, dash, 4040C, under the variances, right next to the vicinity.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dumas.
Clint, just, how do you expect a, an emergency vehicle, let's say, God forbid, a fire engine needed to come up this street, this driveway? How do you expect them to turn around and get out of there? Do you expect them to back up?
The same way they do it in every other family partition ever created, they turn around in driveways that existing, just like any other individual would in a regular car.
Fire engine goes on the driveway, a personal driveway.
They do it all the time, still do it. We didn't, we'd never had T-turnarounds up till a couple of months ago, so I'm certain that, that's what they do. This hadn't been a problem ever since, before this.
I, I live on a, on a, on a street that doesn't have a T-turnaround and I can begin to tell you the number of times they've had to come dig a garbage truck out of the ditch or, you know, and fire engines have to back up the hallway because they will not pull into a driveway.
Really?
At school, at school buses, we, you know, we actually had to convince the school bus driver that it's okay if he cracked the driveway, just please turn around, we don't want him backing up with, with the kids on it. And now they don't even come up the street, they stop at the corner because they don't want to, they don't want to go on the driveway.
Well, school buses shouldn't come down private servitudes, only emergency vehicles.
Ours isn't a private servitude, it's a public street.
Oh, well, you really need to talk to your councilman about that.
But, used to be a private, many years ago, it was a private servitude, but I'm just telling you that, you know, it just doesn't work.
Well, different opinion, I guess. It's worked up till now.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
I notice staff recommends approval of this particular variance for section 17, 4040C as all criteria for the variance submitted has been met. Correct me if I'm wrong, that is the T-turnaround situation?
Correct.
So, we're not breaking any laws or anything like that? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Public comment period is closed on this item. Comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Move to approve as written.
Have a motion to approve as written by Bob Nance.
Second.
Seconded by Dan Sadley. No discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Yes. Mr. Cluot.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Estenhor.
Yes.
Ms. Zerazua-Gradyen.
Yes.
I have one no by Mr. Julio Dumas. Item 6B, the estate of Lester Stevens Senior, lots 2A, 2-Dash-A-Dash-1-Dash-A, 2-Dash-B-Dash-1, C-Dash-1, V, W, X, Y and Z.
There was a problem with the communication between the two attorneys and myself and the family members, so I'd like to defer this item till next month.
Okay, if you're requesting a deferral till our regularly scheduled meeting. Comments or, any comments or questions from commissioners?
Would you, Mr. Jim, would you repeat that, why, why are we deferring it or postponing it?
Um, I want to take full responsibility, so no one else to blame. There was a miscommunication between the two attorneys, this is a court ordered survey and we adjusted the plat. I don't believe the attorneys had a proper amount of time to, to come together and look at the plat and agree that the changes were made according to the court order, so we're going to try to defer it so the attorneys, two attorneys can get together, be brought into old business next month.
All right. Is there anyone here tonight in the audience, the owners of this property here, Clint?
There are several.
There are several here. The, I, the, the thing I'm looking at is do, you know, would it be better to go ahead and if they want to, let them address the commission tonight or if they're willing to come back next month and address the commission then?
The only problem with addressing it now is I don't think that you have a full group of family members here to individually, plus I think that the attorneys need to speak with those family members prior to them getting up to make sure everything is out in the open and to make sure everything is understood by all parties.
Okay, then.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we postpone it till next meeting.
Have a motion to postpone till our next regularly scheduled meeting by Milton Cluot.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Dan Sadley. Discussion? Then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Cluot.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Estenhor.
Yes.
Ms. Zerazua-Gradyen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, y'all have a good evening.
Item 6C, the Ernest Howard property, lots 1 through 13. Mr. Lowbell.
My name is Scott Lowbell, I'm with Lowbell Engineering and Land Surveyors and I represent the Howards on the family partition that we're proposing. If you guys have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
Comments or questions for Mr. Lowbell at this time from the commission?
Some questions of staff.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh...
You know, I know that historically in, when I say historically, I think it's the precedent has been that we don't require drainage and traffic studies for family partitions, but this is an awful lot of lots. What's the code, does the code require and at what time do we, do we make it? Is there a criteria by which we make a decision of when we require them or not?
When it comes to the drainage and traffic studies, they're required under the preliminary plating process and so whenever the preliminary plaits go through, that's when they do their drainage and their traffic studies. And by the time it gets to the final plat, it's, I mean, it's already been completed and so it's not been done. However, when you go into the ordinance, the, the simple division process doesn't have to go through the, the preliminary plat process and the precedence of the Planning Commission is the, the family petitions have been run as, under that section of the ordinance, under the simple division part of the ordinance, except for you guys have to hear it because it's off the private servitude and they're being sent from that. So, because of that, it's not required to go through the, the, it's not required to have the drainage or the traffic study. Because it's not going through the preliminary plating process.
So, you're doing it under a provision of the code that really doesn't apply, the simple division of land, right?
That's how, yes, that's the precedent.
You're doing it under the simple division. So, you're doing it under simple division of property?
The, the actual process of-
Right.
Yes, yes.
Otherwise, it would be required.
It would have to go through the preliminary plat process and, and then all that would, would kick in at that point.
Right. I just think that, you know, this is, this is probably, I mean, have we done a family partition this big?
Not since I have been here.
We've done a few of them before, Julio, throughout the years.
It's 13 lots?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but it doesn't come up very often. It's, it's once in a blue moon.
Part of the question is that the simple division process is limited to nine lots or less. This is over the nine lots, but historically, the established precedent of the commission is to treat family partitions under the simple division process, so there's-
But the simple division process is limited to nine lots.
So, there's a-
So, there, but there is no other process, other than you either have the preliminary plat or the simple division. And, and in the simple division, you're limited to nine lots. We have the precedent where we're not requiring traffic or drainage, so, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're, I don't want to split hairs, but, you know, it's either, it's either nine or less or it's a subdivision. I don't see how you get, how you get past that.
All right. Clarification from the, the commission would be appreciated.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barrow.
I agree with Commissioner Dumas. I mean, this looks to me to be a decent subdivision and I would think that the subdivision would, would require things that would protect the neighboring community such as drainage, traffic, et cetera, that this application would not.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalton.
While I agree with Commissioners Dumas and Barrow, I'm also concerned with the precedent that's been set before where we have gone beyond nine lots and I believe that to be correct, is it not, staff? We've done these greater than nine before under this process?
Being the senior member on this staff, I don't recall one, but Mr. Marshon has been up there a lot longer than I have and I trust his memory.
But I'm, I'm concerned with, I'm concerned with the precedent and unfairly treating this landowner at this point in time because I don't want to change horses midstream.
And I'm not saying that we did 13 lots, but I remember that there were more than nine lots before. Like I said, it's, it's come up, I know, a couple, three times anyway during the past 10 years. It's just something that doesn't happen very often. But I, one of the things that I'm trying to remember, Scott, wasn't there some legal action taken with this also?
Yeah, a little bit of background on the property. What had happened is this property has been in their family for 50 years or more, I don't, I don't know the exact number. And there are several different generations of owners of it now and there, there have been some things go on where some of the family members wanted their, their property that they're entitled to, so they, both sides did hire some attorneys and they went before the judge and before the judge has ruled on it and said, this is the way it's got to be, they came to an agreement to divide the property, both attorneys and, so that's, that's what we're trying to propose.
But that's a civil matter between the siblings, it's not, it's not a public matter, that's a civil matter, correct?
Right, but, and if the judge, if the judge decides that this is the way it needs to be divided, then it'll be, it'll supersede the ordinances.
But unfortunately, we don't have benefit of a judge's ruling.
I, I have to defer to legal there, the, the judge is adjudicated on a civil matter between parties that doesn't involve the code or the parish, you know.
But it wasn't heard.
This is a fact from what recently staff does, question that and my recommendation to surveyors in the future is that the parish should be named as a party in the future and that way, if there is an objection by the commission, we can let the judge know in advance. Yes, the judge definitely has the affordancy to make these divisions in kind of property, but it would be helpful if the parish were named in suit.
Right. So, can we supersede our action?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Well, in that case, then why is he here?
There was no order, I think, that the attorneys decided-
Yeah, they, I mean, they're trying to agree before they spend a bunch of money suing each other and, and try to do the right thing and, and get to a point where everybody can enjoy their piece of property without spending a bunch of money to go through a court proceeding.
So, it's, it's go with this or go with this.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
I find this property particularly problematic. If everyone will call, Commissioner Cluot and I visited this property last time, I haven't been back to it since and, and we did charge y'all, when, so we y'all, when you come back to be sure we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed again. And please recall, we spoke with Mr. Melvin Howard, the alleged owner of lot number one. He came on out while we were there at the property site and he indicated that this property was owned by his parents and his dad had died something like 50 years ago. He claimed that his succession was never filed. He claimed that about 10 years ago, somehow the mother got control of the property, the mother then gave the property to him. We asked him about, well, and who's paying taxes on the property? He said it was tax exempt, so nobody. And so, with all this different confusion, my concern last time and remains this time is who's on first, who's on second? Who owns this property? Can Mr. Melvin Howard, Melvin, since there's, Melvin Howard, sorry, his last name is Howard, since there's a lot of Howards on here, Frank Howard, Lily Bell Howard, et cetera. Is everybody really agreeing to this? And, and as far as legal action, I look back at the January 26 letter from the Parish Ascension Planning and Development Office to the Ernest Howard Family Petition, it says to whom it may concern, if you look down in paragraph three, it says after extensive discussion and limited legal proceedings. What does that mean? Limited legal proceedings? I mean, where are we with this thing?
Mr. Donnie Floyd is one of the attorneys working on it and he's going to try to address those questions for you.
Mr. Floyd.
I hope I can address those for you all. I represent all of the family members except Melvin. For some reason, unbeknownst to all of us, the mother transferred the property to Melvin through a cash sale. Melvin never paid for it. The other family members found out about it, talked to Melvin, tried to get it resolved. He didn't want to try to get anything resolved without a lawsuit, so we filed a legal proceeding alleging that the cash sale was a simulated sale since no, excuse me, consideration was paid and that asked for a court order to set aside the sale so the property could go back in to being owned by all of the family members. Mr. Melvin Howard retained the services of Bruce Kuhn, an attorney in Baton Rouge, and we agreed, I have a letter from Mr. Kuhn stating that they agreed to the partition and setting aside of the original cash sale as long as Melvin Howard didn't have to pay any of the expenses. If you all would like to see that letter, I'll be more than happy to provide it for you.
Thank you.
And spoke with Mr. Kuhn this afternoon, he said that he was not aware that either, he wasn't coming, he didn't think Melvin would be coming. Who should I give this to?
Well, I, I just want a couple of clarifications here.
Sure.
So, there is, there's no court proceeding and there's no adjudication?
There is a court proceeding. We just agreed to resolve it without having to go to trial.
And is, and has there been a judgment?
No.
See, that, that's my problem, Commissioner Dumas, is if, how do we agree or disagree to a family petition tonight until either we have the court action or we're absolutely certain that, I'm not sure we can do this at all.
The family has agreed.
Well, the family has agreed, but-
You just said that Mr. Howard has not.
Thank you.
No, I said it, no, I said, no, I have the letter from his attorney saying that they agreed.
Well, I haven't seen that letter.
Would you place that letter under the thing there on your, so we can put it up on the TV?
You're 100%-
So, everybody can see it.
You're 100% correct. I think the issue here is, is that-
Can we focus that thing?
The family members have agreed upon themselves how to do this, right?
Right, but we have no evidence as to what's going on because I haven't seen these letters.
But, but, but unless it's a court proceeding, it doesn't, it doesn't really supersede our authority over it, if I understood legal counsel correctly. So, without that, without that adjudication, then I think, I think we can look at this and, and decide whether or not we're agreed of this as if it were just a plain old application, absent any, any agreement that they have among themselves. Does that make any sense to you?
No.
Okay, this is an application.
If we need to.
I'm sorry, let me restate that.
We, you know, we, we need to go ahead and focus on, on some of this as far, right now, what's coming before us is an agreement that has, a settlement that has been reached among the family members for this piece of property. Now, if the commission decides that it's not going to approve the family partition and they're forced to go in front of a judge and the judge rules that this is how the property's going to be divided and it's going to come back to us and we will have no choice in the matter, so we need to kind of, and I understand, there may be some information missing right now that commissioners want to, to see, I understand that.
And, and the reason there's 13 lots is because there were 13 children.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
If, if J.B. doesn't mind, Mr. Estenhor was just asking me, of course, he wasn't here last time, and if I reflected this correctly, I'd ask the question therefore, why is not this signed by the, well, it's more than 13, maybe 15 or 16 members, because several signatures are necessary for certain lots, for example, lot 13.
Right.
And I believe I was told by legal or Lowbell, whoever, that it's not necessarily to have it done at this stage, but it can be done later. Nonetheless, it would increase my comfort level greatly when you say everybody's agreed to this, this, you know, would I even, sort of saw a piece of the letter for a minute and it was taken down?
Oh, it's-
Still, as I think about it, I'm starting to side with Commissioner Dumas. I'm not sure that would even matter to me there. This is kind of really dicey, to say the least, because I spoke to an individual claiming that he was given this property from his mother. And he is the legal owner, and he had no idea we were even having a proceeding last time. And he said he was going to be here. Of course, he's not here again. You know, and can quote the defense of the other side. But I don't think we're here to be judges. I think we're here to just decide, this property should be petitioned if it legally can be done so. And that's where I guess I'm still having a trouble.
And we're not asking you to be judges. I mean, it's been agreed upon. Now, I've not met all of these folks, but I know that most of the Howard family is right here. I've only met a couple of them, but they did come tonight. I wouldn't know Melvin if I saw him, so I would assume he's not here. But I have a letter from his attorney stating they agreed to the partition.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalton.
I have a question of our legal counsel. Where do we stand on this as far as any potential ownership? I mean, are we on safe grounds, or do you think we have... We should question the legal ownership of this property? Is it proper for us to address this, is the question?
Yes. I mean, you have a right to have the legal owner be the applicant and to have proof of that submitted to you and feel comfortable with that.
Am I correct in my assessment of these documents? I don't see anything that really makes me feel comfortable that the legal owner is the applicant. Am I correct in that?
I think...
Or did I miss it?
No, I think the discussion here today gives validity to your opinion about it, yes.
And I'm not against the partition. I'm just trying to keep us on good, safe legal ground so we won't expose ourselves to further litigation as a commission.
Right.
Okay, that... Thank you.
I was advised by Mr. Melvin Howard's attorney this afternoon that Melvin would sign it. And all the other family members are going to sign it. Then we will have the partition document.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dumas.
If I may, I understand... My perception is that, as the attorney for most of the property owners, you believe to have an agreement between the property owners of how this thing should be partitioned. That's fine. My perception is that's a purely civil matter among the property owners. There's a question as to whether we have the owners or not here, whether... Or how this thing is actually titled. I think the other issue is the ordinance. Absent the adjudication, there's no superseding of the ordinance. So, I'm still back to, as a simple... As we process these through the simple division part of the ordinance, it's a limit to nine lots that exempts from traffic studies and drainage studies. This clearly is more than nine lots. And I don't... I mean, I'm still not comfortable that we don't need to see that information. But that's just Commissioner Dumas speaking.
One of the... I just want to throw this out there. Because I've never agreed with it a hundred percent. But one of the things that changes some of this up, too, is the fact that the lots are all one acre above. It's that, it's simply on that one, call it a technicality or requirement, that they don't have to provide a sewer treatment plant for... If these lots were, it was thirteen lots that were a half acre, they would have to require the sewer treatment plant. So, it's also based... The size of the lot comes into play also.
Correct.
I think that's what staff is also looking at in relationship to this division of property. So, right now, it's up to the commission how y'all want to handle this. I'd like to, if we're going, at least open up the public hearing on this. I think we have some of the family members here that want to address the commission and give them that opportunity to have their say.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. One follow-up comment first.
Sure.
If I may address staff.
Go ahead.
I noticed on our checklist, and I appreciate Jeffrey, I see you signing off on all of them except this particular one, again, is not signed. Is there a particular reason for that? Because that would go back to this issue, too, about valid division of the land among family members. So, are you... I guess to question directly then, since you didn't sign off, is there a particular reason? Why?
No, this one was in the last packet. It's not in our old business because we didn't have a public hearing. But since it was in the last packet, that was before the time that we were signing off on it like you guys...
But you're willing to put your neck forward that everything's fine here?
Putting it in the packet is basically saying that, yes, we have reviewed it, and it meets all criteria that is in the code. So, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, if there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get you three minutes to speak.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And members of the committee. I don't know if y'all...
Excuse me, sir. Could you please state your name for the record?
Okay, I'm sorry. Ernest Howard, Jr.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. My point is, what I'm trying to get to is, if y'all really understand what we're trying to do and what we've been trying to do for years, all we really want to do is get the property divided up between the siblings. I mean, it's eleven of us now. And we want to... Everybody wants to get their part of the property in their name. I mean, that's all we're trying to do. Now, at the time when the property was put in Melvin's name, my mother was sick, okay? And due to the problems she had with Medicare, they said, "Well, you've got too much property. We can't give you Medicare." So, it had to go in somebody's name. So, it went in Melvin's name. I mean, I guess at the time, it could have, should have went in more than one person's name, but by law, the way I look at it, I mean, he don't own fifteen acres of land. I mean, we're just trying to get it divided up. We've been working on this thing a long time. And, you know, at all costs. I mean, we just want to get to the bottom of it and get it done.
That's it.
Anything else that you'd like to add, sir?
Well, I don't have any problem with, you know... I heard you saying, y'all were saying something about nine lots. I mean, I didn't understand that. I mean, how can you get nine lots out of fifteen acres? I'd make me understand. I don't know what you're saying meaning by that. Maybe that's just a term y'all use in handling the procedure.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like, I'll explain it to him whenever we get finished. Okay, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. We got one more.
My name is Lorraine Thompson, and I'm the granddaughter of Ernest Howard. My mother is deceased. And I remember, from my understanding, we were asked to put the land in Melvin's name because my grandmother was sick or something like that, so the property wouldn't get taken or something like that. I didn't want to do it. I advised my sisters now not to do it, because what's going on right now? I was in school, attended Southern University. And that's why I didn't want to do it, because why are we here today? But I do know the land wasn't just for Melvin. It was put in his name. We had to sign. We went to attorney. We had to sign our name. They couldn't do nothing until we signed our name, because our mother was dead at the time. And no, it's not just for Melvin, I don't think.
Anything else, ma'am?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think we can legally act on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jimmy Howard, Melvin's brother. Just to add a little bit to what was said, the land was not intended for one person. But it was agreed that because, like my niece said, because my mother was sick and because Melvin was on the land, he was the only one standing at that time. And then my nephew, Carl, he moved there. But it was never intended for one person to own that land. Our parent purchased that land for all the siblings. And since some of the, well, two of the sisters died, were their kids entitled for their part. We don't want to do things on a selfish mold, because, see, God is not asleep on the matter. And we appreciate everybody concerned, particularly our lawyer here, who's taking the time and who has been taking time to try to get this thing resolved. And the only thing we want to do is get this thing fairly resolved. Everybody can have what is due theirs. And we want to thank our parent for even purchasing this land for us, because they saw things ahead. But like I'm going to say it again, we just want to get things resolved. The land do not belong to Melvin. He just probably took it the wrong way in his heart. We love him. He is our brother. You know, we don't want to go out here with guns, fight about it, even though we have the lawyer and everything, just because it has to be legal. This is the reason why we got lawyers. We can't do it by ourselves, so we appreciate everything that everybody's doing to try to get this thing resolved. That's the main point why we're here. I'm going to say it again. It's not for Melvin. The reason why I was giving to him or putting in his name is because he was on the property. And she just, you know, she didn't know everything about nothing. She didn't know nothing about this. But she didn't know that it was going to go the way it's going now. We just want to get it resolved and thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask Mr....
First, is there anyone else that wished to address the commission? And then the public hearing is now closed on this item. Go ahead, Mr. Dalton.
Scott, I notice on the... One of these documents, you have signed it as, on the line that states owner slash agent. You used to obviously sign this document as the agent. Agent representing who?
All parties.
Including Melvin Howard? The man whose property, the property's in his name at this point in time?
My services were procured by the attorneys.
Both attorneys?
Yes.
So, the question now, legal, would... Are you satisfied that he's acting, in fact, as the agent of the de facto landowner whose person the name, the land is titled to right now?
Ideally, it would be nice if we could have the agency agreement or something in writing. It would be helpful.
And after hearing everything from these guys, we would like to change our request for approval based on both attorneys getting some documentation to you guys that is acceptable, that y'all feel all owners involved. Or what we don't want it is to be denied, and then we lose a month and everything, because we feel confident that with both attorneys, we can get that information to you in agreement, and everybody will come to pass and say that this is where we're moving and working towards. So, with that said, that's how we would like to request your approval.
Commissioner Marshon, if I may.
Mr. Dumas.
I have a question for the, for both attorneys.
Go ahead.
Our legal counsel and one of the plaintiffs. First, to our legal counsel. If they have an agreement, they've filed a suit to set aside the sale. If they have an agreement, they took it to the judge, and the judge adjudicates or consents to that agreement. That would effectively satisfy the title question and ownership question?
Yes.
Okay. So, a question to you, sir, is, are you willing to take those steps? Just go ahead and take your agreement between the two parties. You've already filed a suit, and go ahead and close the lawsuit out with an adjudication to that settlement that says, you know, settlement or the consent decree, whatever your lawyers call it, or whatever the judge calls it, and bring it back to the parish? Because I think if that addresses the title issue and that addresses the dispute issue entirely, then possibly, you know, we could take an action on this matter, subject to you delivering that document to the parish and having it reviewed by our legal counsel.
Mr. Dalton.
Well, I don't know that I think that's necessary, because I think everybody's in agreement that at this point in time, the land is titled to Melvin Howard. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. All we need is him to be the applicant or his agent. If he's making the request, or his duly authorized agent making the request, we're on safe legal ground. I'm just trying to ascertain if that's where we are, because if that's where we are, then we can act on this. And I don't see any reason them to have to go back to court.
They either got to withdraw the case, or they got to go to court and finish it, right?
If you all sign off on this and we do the partition, it's over with.
Yes.
It's over.
Well, the other thing, and this has been brought up in a number of commission meetings before, before I signed the plat, I've got to review any conditions. I've got to review the plat, make sure all the signatures are there. Now, if the commission requires this agreement, and the agreement is presented before me, and it's signed, everything, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed. We can even have legal review it prior, too, to make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be. If we get that, then I can go ahead and sign the plat. But if there is anything missing, then the plat doesn't get signed.
I agree. I mean, we've done that many, many times.
That's been brought up on a number of occasions in a number of different commission meetings. So, and you can ask Jeff. I sign plats every Friday morning, and we discuss every single one in detail. And I make sure that we've got all of our, you know, everything we need to have. Mr. Clouat.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this petition pending all documents be signed by all legal parties, by all parties concerned, and it meets the satisfaction of the staff and any concerns that they may have. I make that motion, sir.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve contingent upon illegal, well, all legal documents being reviewed by staff and signed by all parties by Milton Clouat, seconded by Howard Dalton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Sadly.
Mr. Clouat, in your motion, are you envisioning by all parties, that particular language, that if they come back and the two attorneys are quote-unquote signing off in behalf of all the, and I wouldn't call them necessarily litigants at this stage, but all the parties involved versus actually coming back next time and having the, what is it, twenty-one signatures that I've been seeking for two meetings now? And when you say parties, do you mean Melvin Howard's going to have signed this specifically, as well as Frank and Lily Bell and...
Yes. Yes. All parties involved. All parties involved.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
That's always been...
If I'm voting motion, I want to be sure what I'm voting on.
No, that's always been...
It's not going to be two attorneys signing in behalf of all the parties. It's going to be the people that are actually going to divide this property up, except saying...
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Dumas.
Commissioner Clouat, the only thing I think I would like your motion to clarify, if you're willing to do so, is to require a copy of the agency agreement, because the agency agreement signed by the original applicant, the current owner, is critical, because that establishes the right to be here.
Yes, sir. I would be willing to add that to my motion.
So, included in the motion is also the agency agreement.
May I ask one question about that? Would it be sufficient if in the settlement document we put that everyone agrees that Mr. Lobell had authority to act on behalf of the owner, Melvin Howard, rather than preparing and having to sign a power of attorney?
I would, I'm agreeable to that, Commissioner Clouat. And I would want that settlement agreement to be one of the submittals.
Right.
Yes. I'm okay with that as long as it's all in the legal, is satisfied with it.
All right. So in, excuse me, in the agency document, in the settlement document, it will stipulate that Mr. Lobel is an agent acting with full power of attorney for Mr. Melvin Howard, as well as the other siblings?
Yes.
All right. Everybody clear on that? Ms. Webb, you've been able to get all this? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I--
Go ahead, Mr. Barrow.
I object to the 13 lots of--
I have a call for the votes yet.
Right. Just as a comment based on my--
Just, we're gonna have discussion and then we'll have to take a vote. And when we take a vote, it's gonna be one of three words. Yes, no, or abstain. That's it. So if you, there's a discussion portion. If you are objecting, just, you're not voting. You're just objecting, state your reasons for your objection or the reasons that you disagree.
That's what I was doing. I was explaining--
When you start off with you vote--
Right. I'm explaining what my vote will be. Because there's no means to communicate that later, is what I'm getting at.
Okay. Any more comment, any more discussion by the commission? Then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Satt?
Yes.
Mr. Essner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerazooa-Grady?
Yes.
I have two nays by Steve Barrow and Julio Dumas. And the motion passed. Item eight on our agenda, committee reports. Our subdivision ordinance subcommittee, Mr. Clouat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subdivision Subcommittee has been meeting each month. And right now, we have on our plate a final draft for development sign requests-- requirements, I'm sorry. Requirements in full, ready to come to the full commission in April. We will have the documents to support that. We also gonna be reviewing section 17 dash 406 of the subdivision regulations this next meeting. We also will have a final agreement on the prenuptial agreement, servitude agreement. We also will have-- I mean, I'm sorry.
You mean the pre-dile?
Pre-o agreement, not pre-nuptial. I'm sorry. I've got a bunch of things on my mind right now. Waiver the agreement--
Are you getting remarried?
No, I hope not. Waiver agreement, a waiver of agreement requirements for the consideration to extend the 60-day period per section L A R S dash 113 of the Louisiana State Statute. And then upcoming will be the sections in regular subdivision will be 17401, 17402, 17404, and 17405. Traffic impact study and a drainage impact study. And then we're working with staff on policies and procedures. That's the report now.
Thank you, Mr. Clouat. Are there any comments or questions about the subcommittee report by commissioners?
Yeah, I didn't remember that one thing.
I think, I think Ms. Clouat's gonna have some questions--
My wife, she's more likely watching this and she gonna wonder why I'm saying that. We were talking about that earlier.
Okay. We better hurry up and move along then and get to item 10. Oh, I'm sorry, item nine, new business.
Wait a minute, Mr. Chairman. Is anybody out here able to spend the night with y'all?
Mr. Dumas, you had an item that you--
No, I don't have it with me. I thought I did.
Okay. Commissioners, any items of new-- Mr. Nance?
Yeah, I've got, I'd like to see us not have a roll call on a couple of things like the acceptance of the meeting minutes. And also, like number two, we don't, I don't think we need a roll call on the proposed agenda. Acceptance of the minutes and adjournment. I'd like us to dispense with those three items.
Second.
Didn't hear him make a motion.
Okay, that's a motion.
He just, new business or it's not active items? There's not a problem with that, with those items. However, the other items of business, I would like to continue taking a roll call vote to make sure that the commissioners are aware of what's taking place also. I think it's, helps out the secretary a little bit. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with, you know, as far as not holding a roll call vote on the acceptance of the proposed agenda or the minutes or adjournment. That's not a problem. Okay, any other items of new business? All right, then we'll move along to item 10, public hearing. Appeal of decision for Stonegate Manor subdivision final plat.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Derek Murphy of Quality Engineering and Surveying. In last meeting, this commission voted to deny the approval of the final plat for Stonegate subdivision for reasons that certain items were not completed on the punch list. Tonight, we here asking for an appeal of that decision and willing to answer any questions y'all have.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Marshall.
Mr. Dumas.
I, if I'm hearing this, if I'm reading this memo, everything, all the inspections, all the punch lists have been signed off, approved, final. There are no issues?
Correct. That's the way I'm reading.
Right. So is legal? I mean, we denied it. They're appealing the denial. Can we act on this thing and approve it tonight? Or does it have to come back to the next meeting?
Yeah, and you can act on it tonight if you feel confident that the punch list is complete at the Stonegate.
Actually, the way the procedure was set up is all they're requesting tonight is a rehearing. They've provided their application to appeal our decision. And all we're voting on is whether or not to rehear it, not actually rehearing it. We went through this thing several years ago. The legal counsel kinda got on to us then about that because commissioners were going ahead and trying to actually rehear the same night. No, we're just, we're just gonna vote whether or not we want to, we think it merits rehearing and then it would be reheard next month. That's how it's been, also, that's how it's been noted, noticed in the agenda. So, and the agenda was not amended as such.
Well, the agenda says appeal of decision.
Application.
Yeah, but--
They've submitted, they've submitted an application in order to have a rehearing. They're not having, they're not, it's not listed as actually having the rehearing tonight. They're applying for a rehearing. That's all they're doing. That's it.
State the specific action you're appealing. Denial of the final plat approval. State the specific outcome you're requesting under the appeal, approval of the final plat. That's what the application says. I'm reading the application.
We're gonna vote on the application whether or not to rehear this and it will be reheard. If we vote to rehear it, then the rehearing will actually take place next month. That's, that's the process that was established. That's what was set up.
I understand, Mr. Chair, but, you know, you also--
I'm not disputing how things were done in the past. I know that this ordinance was amended in 2009. The actual procedure says the subdivider may request the planning commission to reconsider the plat for approval at their next scheduled meeting. And I think they were, they were asking for the rehearing and this reconsideration at this time.
And to say, I understand that. I'm just, that's, that's how this was--
It's up to you.
This was set in accordance with it. That's, that's-- I said, I had discussions with legal counsel about that and it was, the procedure was you-- that's right, you can request a rehearing at your next scheduled meeting, but you're not actually holding the rehearing at the next regularly scheduled meeting. It's the request. That's what the commission's voting on. That's, that's how it was explained to me back then.
And I'm not disputing that at all, Chairman. I'm just saying it's possible that since the time you had the conversation with legal counsel at that time, the law has changed because if you look at section 17 four dash 4092, it doesn't, the way you're explaining it, doesn't make sense in the timeline. That's all I'm suggesting.
In other words, the ordinance says we can act on it tonight. The application is for the approval for tonight. That's what the, what the request is.
Sometime you have to act and then, you know, there's the three-member appeals board.
And that's, and that's where this still falls into place because they're making the request. This is the next regularly scheduled meeting. They're making the request. We vote whether or not to rehear it and we would, which would be in our next meeting. So it still falls in with the, with the process.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, if we, if we automatically denied, if we voted it down, then yes, it would go straight, they get two denials. So if we vote down their application, then they would go to the three-man board. They would automatically go to the three-man board. In this case, it's--
It may have been more detailed at the time, but what I'm looking at is just a simple paragraph and it-- that's, that's just not how I read it. But if you're, if you're comfortable with, you know, setting the rehearing for the next meeting, then, you know.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dalton.
I'm reading the appeal of decision application. And it says, and I quote, "State the specific action you are appealing." They are appealing the denial. They're not, it's, they're not asking for, to schedule a rehearing. They're appealing the denial according to this application. And I agree with Legal. I think they should act on this tonight, one way or the other.
That's, that's gonna be up to the commission. If the commission votes to do that, but I'm, right now, I mean, and of course, there's a, we could have a difference of opinion. But, but I say, that's, that's up to the commission.
Well, the other I'd like to bring out here is says, and further in this application, "Site the specific outcome you are requesting." This is for their application. Site the specific outcome you are requesting under the appeal. And it's, they're requesting approval of the final plat. So I just want to bring that out for everybody to--
And the reason that was done because before, as far as this application, prior to this, somebody just showed up and said, "I'd like you to rehear my issue." We had no information. So this application was created in order to give the commission more information in order to judge whether or not we needed to rehear it or not. I know I wrote the application. And I know what the intent was, so it--
Well, I think we also know what the applicant's intent was from what, what they're--
But, but what I'm trying to tell you is before, prior to, they just showed up and said, "Hey, rehear my issue." And we had no information whatsoever. We didn't know exactly what they, okay, rehear my issue. What did you got to me exactly? We didn't know. Now we have something in writing, so we can get some, some better explanation for that.
And that's, that's a very good point. And we have an application that specifically states what they're appealing and the action they're requesting. And clearly, the code allows us to do that. And do we, does this have to go to public hearing?
Yes, it's, it's, it's notice is a public hearing.
Okay.
So yes, it does. But, Mr. Clouat.
Ms. Manor. You're saying that it's legal for us to go ahead and act on this tonight to approve or disapprove? I mean, approve or send it for announcement to be for next month, right?
Let me just tell you, there is, it's a one, it's one paragraph. Would you all like me to read it?
Would you please?
And you can draw your own conclusion. "If the planning commission denies preliminary or final approval to a major or minor subdivision, the subdivider may request the planning commission to reconsider the plat for approval at their next scheduled meeting. The developer of a major or minor subdivision may appeal the second decision of the planning commission to the planning commission appeals board, which shall consist of three members appointed by the parish president and confirmed by the council and whose duty it shall be to comply with and enforce these regulations. The developer shall meet with the planning commission secretary to lodge the appeal. The appeals hearing must be heard within 40 days of the lodging with the secretary. The determination of the planning commission's appeals board shall be final." So you're also working with that 40-day window as well?
Right. So if, so if we decide that we want to approve this tonight, legally, we can. Yeah. That's what I, that's what I'm getting out of it.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, there's no other questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Sadler.
I can't figure out which punch list is which. Your letter dated March 9th says on February 2nd, "A final inspection was conducted at Stonegate. Punch list was generated from this final inspection." I assume done on February 2nd. "All punch list items have been addressed and punch list is complete as of March 9th." That's today, right? Okay. Is that letter referring to the punch list we had in our packet, Mr. Chairman, last regular P and C meeting? Or is it referring to this new, new punch list that's in our current packet for the March 9th meeting? Because I see items in the new punch list that weren't there last time and vice versa. Which also brings up the issue to staff. Why weren't these new items discovered in the first punch list? And why are they being put here today? And how confident am I to be, period, that everything's done from both of the two punch lists?
Mr. Lawrie, you care to answer that?
I don't see the punch list that you're referring to in my packet. There were no new items added to the punch list following the February 2nd final inspection.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that comment. If it was done on February 2nd and it all was okay, why did, why did we deny it on the 9th when we had a discussion with the different folks where hydroseeding, just as one example, wasn't done at that point?
The punch lists had been prepared at that time for construction activities. Those items had not all been addressed. There are some paperwork items listed on this list here that don't go on a punch list. That's just part of the normal development process.
Okay, so to be totally clear, just, you know, just looking at the second page of the current punch list dated February 28th, asphalt cores have been done. It says we still need, the word "still" sticks in my scarb, compaction test on lots 13, 14, 15. Was that done, et cetera? So when, when, when you're signing off on this thing that says, both you and Mr. Bro, that the punch list is complete as of March 9th, you meaning this punch list on 2/28/2011? As well as anything that may not have been like hydroseeding on the old punch list?
Was a list that was sent to the developer upon their request on what items remained for all of development activities. The punch list is a list prepared by the inspectors whenever they do a construction inspection. There's, this is a combination of the, well, actually, this is the list of items, of paperwork wise, that the developers told about at the beginning at the pre-construction meeting. These were things that we hadn't checked off on our, our list of things that we have to get. So there's two, there's two processes going on here. There's, there's construction and then there's paperwork that oversees that construction so that we have a paper trail proving that all of these items have been addressed.
Mr. Dumas, you had a question for Mr. Lawrie?
So I take it that when you signed the inspection, that means all construction activity is completed? Correct?
The memo that you're talking about that was sent today? Yes, everything is done.
The paperwork--
Construction and paperwork, yes.
Is the paperwork completed?
Correct. That's why we have both the engineering signature and the inspector's signature. The inspectors are overseeing the construction, making sure all of those items are checked off. Engineering is keeping track of all the paperwork that accompanies that, that process.
Okay. Thank you. So everything on the 2/28 is signed off and done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? And at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to address the commission? minutes to speak. No one wishing to address the commission? All right, the public hearing is closed. And comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Could you be more specific? What are you...
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final plat.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve the final plat by Milton Clouat, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Sattler?
Yes.
Ms. Zerizoua-Gradyen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Item 11, unfinished business, 11A, the Donaldsonville Technology and Industrial Park, Phase One, lots 1 and 3.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Carl Capone. I'm here on behalf of the Donaldsonville Industrial Development Park. We've set up a previous subdivision of several lots in our industrial park, and those lots had utility servitudes adjacent to two of them. We previously requested that we had those utility servitudes removed, because we have a client who has, who wants to purchase lots 1, 2, and 3, and he doesn't want the utility servitudes in the middle of the property. Basically, that's where we are today. We've been deferred from the last meeting that y'all had because of a section of the entrance road that did not depict the 12-foot utility servitude on it, and we submitted a map reflecting that. I'm here to have your vote on it to approve that utility servitude being removed.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a quick question. So, what happens to lots 1, 2, and 3? Are they gonna be resubdivided into one lot?
That may be the owner's choice. Once they're sold, they're gonna be sold as lots 1, 2, and 3. We have a, an agreement on lots 1, that if this falls through, it's still intact, so I have to keep the lots there that way, until the deal is completed. The owner may choose to come back later and make it one lot, but that would be his choice. I can't change it until after we've closed the deal on the paperwork, because I have a previous arrangement on Lot 1.
I got a question for staff. I mean, staff, assuming, assuming the purchaser buys lots 1, 2, and 3, he would have to combine those in order to build something across those property lines, would he not?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I'll make them aware of it when they do purchase it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Clouat?
In other words, you're gonna leave lots 1, 2, and 3 intact like they are right now? You just wanna do away with the servitudes?
Yes, sir. I think they're planning to put a building sort of in the middle of that piece of property, and if they have to remove the lot lines in order to do so, we'll instruct them to come back by and have that done. But I have a, an agreement on Lot 1, if, that we have to keep it like this until it's, the deal's closed.
And they have a utility servitude running on the street, so really, these other ones don't serve any other, you know, it's just repetitive. They don't really, they don't need it.
Right.
Comments or questions from commissioners? This isn't up for public hearing, but there is anyone else that's wishing to speak on this item, please come in, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get three minutes to address the commission. Okay, no one wishing to address the commission. Final comments or questions from commissioners? I've got one for legal. We asked them to add a 12-foot going across, a 12-foot servitude going across Lot 2, which they did, but it's not reflected in that ordinance. Should it be?
Take the comments line, that should be sufficient.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to recommend to the parish council approval of the ordinance as written.
Second. I have a motion to approve as, as written to the parish council by Julio Dumas, seconded by Bob Nance. Discussion. There's no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Sattler?
Yes.
Mr. Essner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerizoua-Gradyen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move to adjourn.
I'm 12, gotta... We adjourn by...
Second. Yes.
Bob Nance, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any objections? We're adjourned. We'll reconvene within 10 minutes for a joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.